Start in just about a minute, if you could please have a seat. Thank you. Oh. Oh, I see, okay. Okay. I'd like to call the meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order. Would you please stand for a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Black.
Here.
Alderman Fazini.
Here.
Alderman Fruen.
Here.
Alderman Lauer.
Here.
Alderman Sage.
Here.
Alderman Milowamway.
Here.
Alderman Sterns. Alderman Painter.
Here.
Mayor Renner.
Here.
We're going to start out with a public comment, and we have one request. Just so that everyone knows, we are now moving to and have been having a situation where every regularly scheduled city council meeting, rather than just once a month, we do have opportunities for public comment for up to 15 minutes and to three minutes apiece. And we have one person this evening, and it's a familiar face, Mr. Alton Franklin. Please come forward. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Alton Franklin. I live at 508 Patterson Drive here in Bloomington, Illinois. I don't have a whole lot to say this evening. The one thing that I would like to mention is that yesterday is a very important day to me. Being a dual-service veteran, I've had a lot of friends, I've lost a lot of friends. And the one thing I would ask is that let it be for more than one day. Let's remember why we're here, let's remember what we're doing and why we're doing it. Everybody that I knew had pretty much a singular goal, which was to make things better for the folks who come after us, whether it's our children, our grandchildren, our friends, our neighbors, whoever it happens to be. Everything that we do should be a move to improve that situation in some fashion. What we do here, and I say "we" because I do feel like I play a role. I'm a little bit more mouthy than most. It's a product of my upbringing. I was told by my grandfather, God rest his soul, that when you don't say something, you're agreeing with what's being said and what's being done. I don't hold to a lot of the things that go on. Fortunately, they do seem to be on the wane, but I know that all things are cyclical, too. That's another thing my grandpa taught me. There's always a beginning, and there's always an end, so there can be a new beginning. I'm hoping that I'm seeing the beginning of something new and something that works to do exactly what I was talking about, to improve things for those who come after us. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we move right along to the consent agenda, and I believe Alderman Milowamway, I know you had something you would want to pull.
Sure. I think it's item 7J.
The application of Illinois State University Board Trustees for Shakespeare Festival for a limited alcoholic beverage service? Okay, so we're pulling--
And I will step out.
Seven J, you'd like to pull out separately. Okay. Are there any other items that members of the council would like to pull? Is there a motion to approve? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'd like to go ahead and pull seven D, E, and F. Just a couple of short questions.
Seven D.
Right, address these earlier, but I didn't.
D and F. Okay. Alderman Fazini, did you have something?
No, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the consent agenda minus D, F, and J.
Okay? Is there a second?
A second, thank you.
Second by Alderman, Alderman Schmidt. Any other discussion? All right. Mayor, with the-- Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry.
With regard to the consent and the regular agenda, I have not received any monies or financial benefits from any of the individuals or organizations referenced in each of these specific agenda items.
Okay. And if you'll go ahead and start the vote? Okay. There are eight ayes and there are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. Now, we'll move right along to items 7, D, and F. Did you want to consider those together?
I can, it's just a couple of short questions. I think that maybe we just-- Maybe things weren't written as well as I could understand them, or vice versa. In 7D, it doesn't explain, it mentions a replacement, doesn't explain what we're doing with the current unit, and maybe somebody could fill me in.
Let's see, City Manager Hales?
I can say this, I'm not sure exactly in this case, but if it is something that no longer has utility to any department within the city, then it would be sold, you know, as in accordance with the city's surplus property policy. And that is, that would be on a competitive basis, could be online, could be in person, as provided in that particular. But I--
I'm aware of that, David. What I was questioning is it just doesn't spell out exactly what-- It mentions it's a replacement, not an addition, and so it could be an addition, maybe it's just misprinted, or it doesn't explain, you know, exactly what's going on with the current unit, which I think we probably could put to use. I don't know.
And that may be the case. Is Jim Karch, Public Works Director here, or I don't know, Sue, do you know? We could certainly get back to you-- Yeah. Jim, can you come up? Do you know how they're going to utilize the existing piece of equipment that's being replaced by this?
My apologies, I was looking at 7E, and I was thinking that was a different area. So 7E, that one, 7D, that is going to be a skid steer that we've talked about before, that we're going to be utilizing for the milling fill operations. One of the things we're trying to do is, we've only had this smaller planer, and so your root question is, what do we do with the old one? We actually, at times, our hope is to have two different milling operations going with the new asphalt spreader. Part of our issue is number of people, but the goal is going to be, we want to be able to do the smaller mill machine for more of our water ditches, some of the other work that we've got for some of the smaller joint work, but we need that larger machine for those larger patches, and so we'd still like to be able to use both, because we think there'll be utility for both pieces of equipment.
Okay, so it was a misprint that it's actually replacing something else?
It is, it will be replacing the normal, the normal use of that milling fill operation. This will replace that older piece of equipment. We're going to try to keep that, we're not going to try to sell it right away. It will be sold, as City Manager pointed out, once it, you know, like the maintenance of it costs more than it can, more than its useful life. But the, what we were finding last year is we rented, if you looked at our, what we had last year, all year we rented this piece of equipment, this exact type of piece of equipment, because it wasn't able to keep up, and we still were renting it. So we said, if after a year we're renting it and we need that to keep up with our operations, we need to purchase that piece of equipment. So it only made economic sense for us.
Thanks, Jim. And on, we might as well just keep you here for just a second. On 7F, it talks about the 2007 Ford Expedition, and I'm questioning why that's got to go to surplus with only 60,000 miles. It's really not that old. Maybe, maybe there's more detail that I don't understand here, but I would think that that could be used someplace else and defray purchasing or leasing another vehicle right away in that other department. I understand why, you know, this particular department would, would not necessarily want a vehicle with very much age on it, I've got that. But are we, do we have a program where we can, can take something that might have gone to surplus from one department and actually move it over to a different apartment and find a new use for it?
Yes.
Okay.
Very much so. That, that's kind of the, one of the first things the fleet manager looks at, is can another department use some of this older equipment? So that's our general practice and policy, first to look at.
Seems like I'm splitting hairs here, but I just, you know, I think there's a cost savings possibly, if the vehicle hasn't, you know, nearly reached its useful life and most of them don't at 60,000.
Very true, but some of the emergency service vehicles actually get used more, just, they're ridden a lot harder maybe than, than other equip, pieces of equipment. One of the things we try to include in every one of our council memos is the amount of maintenance costs, and you'll see that in this one that is over $16,000 for this piece of equipment. So now, even though there are times, if we're replacing it less than that standard, more that over 100,000 mile, and kind of, we'll provide that justification. So we look at that, if there's better utility for that, then absolutely we'll try to reuse that.
Okay, well, thank you.
Do you have your, do you want to speak to this Alderman Fazini?
No.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve items 7, D, and F?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Moved by Alderman Schmidt, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Painter. Any further discussion? If you could, I'll go ahead and vote, please. There are eight ayes and no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. Okay. Now, we move right along to item 7J, and if you want to be excused, and we'll, we'll come get you in an hour. Is there a motion to approve item 7J from the consent agenda?
I would like to make a motion to approve this as presented.
Okay. Moved by Alderman Schmidt, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Fazini. And any discussion? Go ahead and vote, please. There are seven ayes, there are no nays to announce, there obviously is the abstention of Alderman Milowamway. Thank you. If you could, we can ask Mboka to come back. We won't, yeah, see, we're going to keep you out in an hour. We're going to move right along to the regular agenda items 8A, the Central Illinois Regional Airport Enterprise Zone expansion and amendment to the Enterprise Zone intergovernmental agreement to include new territory. And I will go ahead and turn this over to our City Manager, Mr. Hales.
Mayor and City Council, we're bringing to you tonight an ordinance that, if approved, would allow the enterprise zone to be extended to incorporate property of the Central Illinois Regional Airport. I think we're all very pleased to hear that FedEx will be locating a new facility, investing $5 million out at the airport, adding 30 new jobs, and we have provided you some background information on this proposal. We do have Ken Springer, Vice President at the EDC here tonight, to answer any questions you might have on this ordinance, and we would recommend you approve it.
Just as a general thing, I want to certainly hats off to the EDC and others who made this happen. Obviously, this is a coup for us in Central Illinois, and hopefully the harbinger of things to come, where people realize, wow, you know, Bloomington, Illinois is the center of the known universe, and if you want to come and strategically locate, we're the place to do it. But anyway, thanks, Ken, for all you've done on this and many other things. I mean, we just had so many great successes.
Mayor, if I could, we also have Carl Olson, Executive Director at the airport, and if there's anyone who, over the last three years, has been very much working on this project, it is Carl. So just kind of want to recognize, it's, you know, it's, and who knows? Maybe we'll have some more exciting news about other developments. So he's been very involved in this project, but EDC is the one we go to on these enterprise zone expansions, and he's also been, Ken's been very helpful as well, so.
Thank you. Do we have, actually, if we could start out with, is there a motion before we begin discussion? Is there a motion to--
Civil?
I move that we approve as presented. Okay. All right. Moved by Alderman, Alderman Fazini, second by Alderman Fruen. And now, discussion, comments. Alderman Fazini? Thank you.
Ken? Thank you. Is the Federal Express coming here contingent upon this being approved?
It's tough to say that, first of all, thank you very much for the opportunity to address the council. It's tough to say explicitly that Enterprise Zone is 100% the yes or no arbiter of whether or not this project's going to happen. The fact of the matter is that Enterprise Zone is an incentive that is, it is not a very lucrative incentive. In general, projects that utilize Enterprise Zone end up saving between 3% to 5% of their project costs as a result of using Enterprise Zone. And granted, most projects that are hinging on a 3% cost reduction are not exactly financially viable to begin with. So it's really tough to say that that is the case. I know for a fact, though, that it has been explicitly requested, requested by the developments. We believe it will be helpful, it'll be a nice thing, it'll help certainly future developments at Central Illinois Regional Airport, it'll make the airport more attractive for the types of developments that we would like to see. But as far as it being a make or break incentive, I just don't think it's financially powerful enough to really wield that kind of a strength.
But it was requested by FedEx?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely, and the developers of the project, yes.
And, and it will benefit others that come, or help you and us attract others?
Correct. And the intent of this, this Enterprise Zone amendment goes, goes far beyond FedEx. The FedEx piece of this is very nice, it's a nice thing to have as part of the amendment, but the EDC has approached this as a longer-term strategic play for the community and for Central Illinois Regional Airport. We view CIRA as a very powerful asset that our community has, and we think that further development in and around CIRA will only enhance that asset and make our community more desirable, and so therefore, we see this as a long-term strategic play for the community. The FedEx piece is just, just that, it's a piece.
Thank you, Ken. Okay. Alderman Lauer.
Okay, and so you're, you're telling us that they may or may not take advantage of this? I, I'm not quite clear, are they going to be included in, in the, in the Enterprise Zone?
Yes, yes.
And what other existing facilities would be included in that as well?
The vast majority of the territory that we're looking to add is currently vacant land, or--
And, right, but is there anything else encompassed in that area?
There's nothing that we can name at this point. We, we hope to see additional types of logistics warehousing and airport-related type of operations move in and take advantage. One of the other big benefits to this project beyond, obviously, the jobs and the capital investment that this FedEx project is going to bring is-- Losing my train of thought. Oh, that's where I was going to go. Still fishing for my Memorial Day weekend. This is going to help CIRA diversify its revenue streams. Right now, CIRA is very dependent on property taxes as part of their funding, and by leasing land, selling pieces of land, if they're able to do that.
Yeah, I'm very, actually personally, very aware of the plight of CIRA, and probably a lot more history than most here. One of the things I'm a bit concerned about, and my constituents are a bit concerned about, is the cost-benefit analysis of this whole issue. How much, how much of the cost are the taxpayers actually going to have to burden, be burdened with?
It's tough, it's tough to estimate, because, again, this is an incentive that we're setting up in the, in the hopes of future attraction, and so quantifying what may or may not happen in the future is very difficult. As I said at the outset, projects can save between 3% to 5% of their, of their project costs. The one project that we know is in the pipeline is a $5 million project, so 3% to 5% of that would be incentives. And again, with the Enterprise Zone, these are state-based incentives, not local ones. The Enterprise Zone is a state-based incentive here.
Okay. And I have to assume that these are, since we're just transferring the facility from Peoria here to Bloomington, that, that those people are probably, at least initially for a few years, going to commute? They're not really adding any additional jobs to Central Illinois, is that correct?
We do, actually do not know how FedEx intends to operate and how they intend to shift assets between here and Peoria. Actually, that's one of the reasons why, you'll read in the summary that is attached to this, is the estimates are coming from the EDC, because FedEx is not talking publicly about what they are going to do and what they're not going to do. So from what we have heard, from comments made from folks in Peoria, we anticipate that it is going to require a shift in operations from Peoria to Bloomington Normal, as far as which, which jobs are going to be transfers, which ones are going to be new. We, we do not have that information to share.
And beyond the FedEx project, is there any indication, can you tell us, do you have a number of other entities that are currently already interested that this might entice, or--
We don't have any names that we can share. In general, the thought that the EDC and our stakeholders have taken towards this is if you look at, if you look at other regional airports, and even big, larger, you know, capital airports like O'Hare around the country, there's always a certain type of development that seems to cluster around those airports. And those, those are businesses that largely take advantage of air and air cargo as being a value add to their operations. So I mean, if you go up and drive around O'Hare, for example, and you'll see lots of international logistics forwarding, you'll see sometimes prototyping, custom fabrication, you know, somebody's got to get a part, you know, to a manufacturer halfway around the country and do it so very, very quickly. Those will tend to cluster around airports. So our intent in this whole project is to help CIRA to look a lot like some of those other airports with that cluster of development, of folks looking to take advantage of that asset.
I know that Carl has looked at it. A real good example of that is, is what Rockford has done over the years. They actually have some very advanced technologies that are aviation support-type entities. And from that standpoint, is there not a certain percentage of, of those that are required to be aviation-oriented? Is that correct?
There actually is no requirement, as far, you're talking about as far as you can enterprising benefits? No, Enterprise Zone is designed to be wide open, so any commercial entity that locates within the Enterprise Zone technically has access to the same basket of incentives. It's designed to be very egalitarian in the way it's applied.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's next Alderman Sage and Milowamway.
Yeah, a couple of quick questions. First of all, Ken, I'm in favor of this and appreciate the work. I've sat up here now for seven years, right, and I've seen a lot of your thoughtful work come to us, and I appreciate that. My question is more along the lines of the practice of applying the Enterprise Zone. In the past, my recollection is, we've been very surgical in terms of applying the Enterprise Zone to a specific tract with a designated use, and it's almost been more of a formality, if you will, of adding the Enterprise Zone onto that, that tract of land. But here, we're actually creating more of a footprint that is, we don't really know what we're going to use it for, right, potentially? Is that, is that a correct--
That's a pretty accurate characterization. In the past, and by in the past, I'm talking six, seven years ago, we were very, very surgical in terms of how we utilize the Enterprise Zone. In fact, we would, we would do amendments for very specific parcels, specific projects. For example, many of you may remember the Camtech project with the old former IRS building. That's a very surgical Enterprise Zone amendment. However, in recent years, and I guess the best example of this would be the recent amendment for downtown Bloomington, we have shifted back to putting targeted areas into the Enterprise Zone, and I think that's, that's being driven largely by the fact that the clock is ticking on our Enterprise Zone. Our zone entirely, 100% of our zone is gone as of July 1, 2016, and we still have a lot of territory left in our bank to deploy. And so I think over the years, we were very conservative with how much zone territory we were deploying with the intent that we wanted to save as much of that as possible. However, with, with the end in sight, so to speak, I think we've gotten a little bit less conservative as far as how much territory that we need, we need to bank, and so that's why you've seen these larger amendments that really look at entire geographic areas. And, and really, and I think the comment actually was made from this council last time we were here, that, that really was the original intent of the Enterprise Zone. I mean, the whole point of the Enterprise Zone is not to be used as a discretionary incentive for single parcels. The point of the Enterprise Zone is you put it into a geographic area that you'd like to see develop, and then that, it becomes the enticement to bring new businesses in to that, that area for development, which is why the zone initially, the bulk of the Enterprise Zone to this day, since the 1980s, is centered on the west side, and in the area around Mitsubishi. That was initially the targeted focus for our Enterprise Zone, and so we've kind of gotten back to the original intent, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, again, I appreciate, and I like to, and I like what the mayor has said from time to time in terms of success, breeding success, right? And, and we see some development there, and that appears to be a good starting point there, so thank you, Ken.
Thank you. Alderman Milowamway.
Okay, thank you, Ken. Just have two questions. The first one is, I know you've talked about 30 jobs, right, for this particular project, and do you know the range in terms of, you know, whether it's all high-paying jobs, or is it, you know, lower-paying jobs, a combination of both?
Unfortunately, that's, that's one of the details that we don't know. Usually, we come with, with these Enterprise Zone amendments, and we have a much better idea of what the end operation's going to look like, but due to the information that FedEx is, feels prudent to release at this time, they really haven't shared that with us, and so I honestly do not know. I can't provide detail on that at this time.
All right, thank you. And then the other question I have is, what happens with the Enterprise Zone after 2016? What type of other tools are you thinking about in your toolbox to encourage economic development?
Thank you for asking that question. I, I do, I do, you know, 2016, July 1st, 2016, the Enterprise Zone here in Bloomington Normal will be no more, and, and every business in that Enterprise Zone on that same day will lose benefits simultaneously. And every business in that enterprise zone on that same day will lose benefits simultaneously. There is an opportunity for us as a community to pursue a new enterprise zone. There's a new round of applications that will be due at the end of this year. However, it is going to be extremely competitive, and there will be no preference given whatsoever to communities that have had enterprise zones in the past. So we need to, obviously, we want to pursue enterprise zone. As many of you guys know, enterprise zone has been our big tool. It's been our hammer in our toolbox, economic development-wise, for the last 20 years or more. 90% of the projects that the EDC has worked on over the years have used enterprise zone in one shape or form or another. So it's been a very important tool to us. However, being a defensive strategist, we need to think about what happens if we do not get another enterprise zone. And believe me, these zones are being awarded based on some very, very stringent criteria, based largely along poverty line, and commercial vacancy rates, things that indicate high levels of poverty. And as a community that is relatively affluent compared to some of the neighbors around the state, we certainly need to look at what happens if we do not get another enterprise zone.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. I wonder if everybody can vote then. Thank you, Mr. Springs. We have seven ayes, oh, excuse me, eight ayes and no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. Thank you. And we move right along to item 7B, fiscal year 2015 service agreement with the Downtown Bloomington Association, DBA. And the recommendation by the staff is that this be approved in the amount of $90,000. Is, in order to begin the discussion, is there a motion and a second?
Excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry. Alderman Schmidt.
I will be recusing myself from this as a member of the DBA Board of Directors. So I'll leave, and hopefully, it won't be an hour.
Okay. Well, no, we have budgeted 15 minutes, so--
I'll make the motion that we approve as presented.
Okay. Moved by Alderman Black, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Painter. Okay, then if we could see, who would like to address this issue? Okay, Alderman Lauer? Anyone else at this point? Mr. Hales?
I was only going to say, Mayor, we do have both Justine Robinson, who's kind of been working with the DBA here tonight, but also Trish Stiller, Executive Director of the DBA. So we can draw on either one of those to help answer any questions council might have on this latest installment of a strong partnership agreement between the city of Bloomington and the downtown DBA.
Right. And it clearly is an important component of economic development in our downtown, our downtown associations, and certainly providing the farmer's market and many other things are absolutely critical. And certainly, as we've said many times, our downtown is our cultural core, our historic core, and it has to thrive if we're going to thrive in the 21st century because we're not going to thrive in the 21st century by building more strip malls. That's pretty much a dead end. But anyway, I will go turn to Alderman Lauer. And if anyone else seeks to speak, we'll have a little time. Yes?
Yeah, I guess if Justine maybe want to come up and answer a few of the questions here. Thanks. Can you fill us in on how many viable businesses downtown are actually members, dues-paying members otherwise, helping to defray some of the expense here?
Sure. For the most up-to-date number, I'd like to defer to Tricia Stiller, the Executive Director of the DBA, who keeps track of that on a daily basis.
I bet she does.
Certainly. That's an excellent question, Alderman Lauer. And currently, we have 71 of our businesses that support us financially at a variety of levels. We try to make that as affordable as possible to independent artists. We have an artist level, a friend level, a resident level, a business level, and then a higher-level sponsors that we do get from those who truly support us.
Can you share with us maybe a dollar amount per annual?
Oh, certainly. The artist level is a $25 level, and that can also be a student level. The friend of downtown is a $50 level. The resident level is $75. The business level is the recommended $200, and this is annual. So it's a one-time fee, and it covers the entire year. And then we have sponsorship levels at the $3, $5, $300 and $500 level and the $1,000 level.
Can you give me an annual total of what you're running on average?
Well, we're still collecting for this year. We can always do better, but we're just shy of $10,000 that we receive from memberships and other donations. In order to increase our support beyond what the city is able to give us, we are starting to do private fundraisers. We've done two successful Christmas green-selling events that have provided us with some income. We also just very successfully had a downtown trivia night, which generated a lot of support for this. So we are working towards finding additional sources of support. In addition to that, we have also created a non-endowment fund through the Illinois Prairie Community Foundation, which can open us up to other grant possibilities and other opportunities for support.
Okay, and along with that, then, a little bit of history, maybe, to kind of help me out because I haven't been involved at this level very long. When we initially, as a city, established this, it's my understanding that it was to be a net neutral to the city. In other words, at some point in time, five years down the road, I believe, and I think that was to end in 2011, any financial support directly from the city in terms of taxpayer dollars. Is that correct?
Absolutely. Justine can speak to that a little bit more from the city staff position. I would like to point out, however, that over the years, we have gradually reduced the level of support that we have asked from the city. We are now receiving half of the funding that we originally received going back to 2008, I believe, when we were at a much higher level. So we are operating on half the funding and half the staff currently. And I think we are continuing to increase our output without asking for more.
Alderman, I'd like to just answer that question. Certainly, back when there was a tax increment financing district for the downtown area, city had additional resources, and that's when that funding level was just below $200,000. Plus, there was a lot more in the way of requests, you know, the city had. However, it was by prior city action that there was kind of a step-down decision made that with the expiration of the downtown TIF, city contribution would be reduced down to $90,000 a year. And then I think even you can find in some of the minutes that there was discussion that even if that was to be continued, there needed to be, you know, specific performance standards entered into. We would specifically look to the DBA of providing very specific services that normally you sometimes find cities even funding, you know, downtown marketing and even involvement in special events. So ultimately, this has been an evolving, not only contractual relationship, but a funding relationship. And I do recall, and hence, that's why you have additional information in here about the accomplishments, the performance. That is a requirement each year for the DBA to come back and show what did they provide for the contribution made by the city. And these are opportunities for the council to engage DBA and see if that's sufficient, you know, for the contribution level being asked by the DBA.
So can you, maybe, let's just take for an example, the farmer's market may not exist without these funds. How much of, how much of the farmer's market is actually net neutral? In other words, in terms of percentage, is the city just providing all the funds to provide that farmer's market? Or--
That's a little bit of a complicated question to answer, sir. The city stipend that is provided to the DBA is in monthly installments, okay? And so basically, those funds are used for general purposes, to provide us with office space, to provide us with continuing education opportunities. The farmer's market actually pays for itself through vendor booth fees. So the vendors who participate in the market actually provide the funding stream in order to maintain that market.
Okay, so that's a net-neutral entity then?
It is a net-neutral.
So what other activities down there can you say that are of very high level of success that we really don't feel that we can do without?
First Fridays, if I may--
Oh, certainly.
--bring a tremendous number of visitors to the downtown community and result in over $1 million of sales tax revenue being generated by the downtown community each and every year.
Okay. And so from its inception to today's date, how much have we actually invested? I think Mayor Stockton threw out a figure some years ago, around $12 million at that point in time. Is there any accounting in terms of where we are as an investment?
I think certainly what you do find in the staff backup report is what has been the increase in the EAV, the downtown. Now, again, we don't necessarily attribute all that to any one particular, you know, cause. But even before the DBA, there was other organizations with the mission of how do you kind of revitalize, expand, enhance, you know, cause the downtown to be more vital? To how do you continue to bring new and different activities, events down there? It's just like by criterion. So there certainly has been a lot of that. What we do find, that when you look at Main Streets throughout the nation, is unless there's a concerted effort, a proactive effort to help downtown in many ways, what we don't want to have is unfortunately what some cities have seen as their downtown go into this death spiral, where it's just kind of a vacant, ghostly area. And that's, unfortunately, that's the inertia behind what happens to some of these older downtowns when there isn't many players out there trying to revitalize, re-energize, you know, constantly looking how we can create new, more investment. Even the enterprise zone that was talked about has been a critical source to get some recent new buildings.
Okay. Okay, so from that standpoint, you can't really give me a total. Is there a goal in terms of a step-down where we now do have a new point in time which we expect to be net-neutral and the taxpayers are not going to have to continue to invest taxpayer dollars directly into downtown?
My opinion is I don't know that we'll ever see that day. Because you've got to keep in mind, when you deal with historic structures like we have downtown, the cost of remodeling these particular historical buildings is much more, is more costly than sometimes if you just raise it and put something in new.
David, I've got that. I've actually got friends that own some of those buildings downtown. I understand that. I'm just looking at the cost-benefit analysis here in terms of the average citizen and what are we getting for our investment? And for that matter, where are we investing this type of money elsewhere in our community? I'm sure that with a few million bucks, South Hill or Morsey Crossing or many of these other areas could be promoted quite vigorously as well.
I just one other example, we donate $100,000 to the EDC organization each year. And again, we're trying to partner on a regional basis to help ensure that we are very proactive in helping to bring new businesses or help existing businesses expand, so.
I'm not sure if all of you on council are aware, but the DBA, the downtown is a registered historic district, and we were designated an Illinois Main Street community in 2005. It is required to maintain that designation that there is a management system in place. I report monthly to the Lieutenant Governor's Office. That is the governing body that oversees the statewide program. And I am afforded a number of continued education and training and workshops. In fact, I just returned from three days in Detroit. The National Main Street Revitalization Conference was held in Detroit. So there's a continuing level of support that is offered through that program. And we're coming up on our 10th year as a designated community. That's very exciting.
I understand that, and thank you. And again, I don't want to take up the entire time here. But are we investing any other, in any other areas of the city like this?
Well, I think it depends on how you frame it. But certainly, CDBG money would be going, you'd probably have a lot, many tens of thousands of dollars in South Hill every year that are invested in a lot of different places. So I think neighborhood revitalization is different from downtown.
I understand that.
And then that's sort of like, you know, I might be working on--
Having been a builder, I'm well aware, right.
But if my heart is there, I want to make sure that's pumping.
I'm just concerned that we're so concentrated on one area that we've got many, many other areas of town that are really paying for this and not really receiving a real direct benefit.
I think that's up to us to help continue to make the case that if you have, there are no communities out there, no cities our size, that have downtowns that are declining, that are thriving.
But to what level are we going to continue to pump money in so they thrive? That's my point here.
Right.
And certainly, there are some other areas of our community that could use the investment, such as maybe some of the west side areas. So it's my concern that at what level, you know, if we have those metrics, at what level have we got a goal? Have we met that goal?
Okay, all righty. Cool. Why don't you stay here because we may have others? Alderman, I think Fazini, Black, and Sage.
Okay. To answer your question about meeting the goals, my questions before the meeting were answered because I asked specifically about certain goals. And apparently, not apparently, the answer was they have met their goals and they report every month. And we do track it. So I was satisfied with that. Just for background information, I was Vice President of the Uniquely Bloomington Association for five years. And that's the association that made the BCPA recommendation and several other things. During that time, we were getting $200,000 a year. And it ratcheted down after Uniquely Bloomington. We also were getting a grant, a facade grant, that was available for $200,000 a year. And that money, when it was invested, for every dollar that came out of that facade grant, there was $8 of improvements to buildings in downtown. Let me put that in perspective a little bit. As a banker, I made 24 loans for fixing up buildings downtown. I would not have done that had the downtown not looked like it was going to thrive. You don't put money in something that's going downhill. I wasn't the only banker doing that. So our downtown needed to look like it was getting better, and it was getting better. And that just builds on itself. So I believe the fact that we're down to $90,000, and I say down to, that's down from $400,000. It was $200,000 in cash and $200,000 in facade grants. Now, we're not doing the facade grants. We are doing $90,000 in cash. So I'm for what you're doing. I like the fact that you report, and I like the fact that you are making what you said you would do in the reporting. And I agree with the mayor, we need a thriving downtown to have a thriving community. And it looks like you're contributing to that. So thank you.
Alderman Black, and then Sage and Painter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Tricia and Justine, for your comments. I appreciate your time and then the information that you've given us and the comments and everything you've done for downtown Bloomington thus far. I was laughing when you had asked me to do the trivia night, and it was for celebrities. I'm like, I'm not a celebrity, please. But those are the types of events we want to see more of. And there's a couple of ways I can go about this conversation. And I guess, you know, right out the gate, you know, when I ran, a lot of people had mentioned to me that they wanted to see downtown get better because my ward is adjacent just north of downtown, and people were concerned that if it were to fall apart or we stopped investing, that their home values would go down. So there was an economic incentive to it. And then along those conversations, people asked me what my vision for Bloomington was, and that's a fair question for someone running for office. When it comes to downtown, I'd like to see us put resources where it matters, and downtown matters to me. You know, I got up and I went to the farmer's market at 7:00 AM. Yes, millennials do wake up before 8:00 AM on-- I was still up the night before, that's right. I'm busted. You're right, you're right. I got busted there.
You missed the shuttle bus home that morning.
Rob was with me, so, you know, he was familiar, you know. Took the bus back. But you see the enthusiasm of people for the farmer's market. The farmers are excited, people are excited because they're getting locally grown, healthy foods. And you're seeing people come out, artists are out. I mean, it's an economic generator. And we talk about how other ways that we can create opportunities for people to spend money downtown. I mean, when my mom came to visit, we went downtown because she'd rather go somewhere you can only get in Bloomington than you can go to McDonald's, but why? We rather, we went to Reality Bites because it's a unique restaurant that's downtown, and these things don't just happen. And the DBA is a facilitator of that. And when I think about my vision for downtown Bloomington, I'd love to see more festivals, more of the trivia nights, more of different things that are happening. Because a lot of times, we wonder, you know, what's to do in Bloomington? And we're attracting FedEx, we're attracting these new businesses. But, you know, these are people who want to spend money that have disposable income. I went to the BCPA 2015 season that they were talking about. I mean, these are the things that we're doing to keep people here, keep people excited at a very low investment cost. And I don't know if we can quantify it in hard dollar cents of $90,000 versus what we get back. But I would imagine that with downtown deteriorating, who would want to go down-- go down there and have dinner? Who would want to go down there and, and visit an art gallery? So, to me, it's very important that we make this investment in our community, and we're serious about it. And we're serious for new festivals coming to Bloomington, we're serious for things to do, and I want to see it happen. So, I think you're doing great work and I'm fully supportive. Thank you.
Okay. Well, obviously, we're, this is an exciting topic. So, we have, you know, we're going beyond our time, but that's great. Alderman, Sage, and Painter, and then we'll vote.
Yeah, and I'll be brief, because I think Kevin asked some good questions. And so, a couple of the things we've done, you've already alluded to, right? Before, there was like a five-year plan. And now, we've reduced that almost to an annual plan to build in more accountability. And we've added performance metrics. I mean, we've asked the EDC to have performance metrics, we've asked CVB to have performance metrics. And so, we've tried to bring a little rigor and a little diligence around that. And, and so, we have taken some steps, some steps forward in that regard. And I guess I agree with what David said here a few minutes ago. I mean, whether, whether there is a staff person or a private sector person, there has to be resources dedicated to kind of overseeing and coordinating and helping manage downtown. And that's what I feel like you do. I mean, you're, you're an extension of staff in some respects, and so I appreciate your efforts, so thanks.
And last but not least, Alderman, Painter.
Well, thank you. I think the DBA is just great. I worked the farmer's market last Saturday and so many people came down there and enjoyed what they could buy and see, and I think you've got great momentum going. You've brought the costs down and I'm looking to see things go forward. As a matter of fact, when I was in the Coffee Hound, a woman came up to me and just introduced herself, started talking to me and said that she grew up in Bloomington and she was just back here to see her family for a few days, but she was so thrilled with the downtown and how much better it looked than it was when she left. And she really wanted to know how things got turned around, and, you know, I said, you know, we've got a vision for what we want done, and thank you for moving it forward. I'm all for this.
Thank you very much.
It's not done by accident, it's hard work, thanks, from all of us. Okay, I wonder if we could go ahead and vote, please? Thank you. See. Oh, shoot, why isn't this doing it? There we go, sorry. There are six ayes, one nay. Madam Clark?
The nay is Alderman Lauer.
Okay, thank you very much. We move right along to item 8C, the Intergovernmental Agreement to Support the Household Hazardous Waste Collection in Bloomington Normal and McLean County, to be overseen by the Ecology Action Center for $31,500 per year for three years. And I do see that Mr. Brown and others are in the audience, but I will turn this over to our City Manager, Mr. Hales.
Mayor, we.
Just to give us a, oh, actually, can we get, should do that, I suppose. I've been following that motion to approve, and then we'll discuss.
I'll make that motion.
Move by Alderman Black, second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Fazini. Again, my apologies, Mr. Hales.
Mayor, just wanted to make a few brief comments, and that is, we have seen over the last few years with some significant resources from the state of Illinois, but also with donations from the private sector, assistance from the public sector, we've had two just phenomenal household hazardous waste collection events. Unfortunately, what we have found is there is a great need to continue this ki- kind of activity on a regular basis, as opposed to before we even had the, the first one here a few years ago. I think it had been 10-plus years since the last time the area had a household hazardous waste collection. So, the three entities working with the staff members, we, we are proposing that McLean County, Town of Normal, City of Bloomington participate in this three-year funding agreement so that we can, going forward, have a funding source, that we want to continue to augment this with grants and others, but we do see a great need to see some sustainability in funding so that these can be a regular occurrence for our residents. And this particular intergovernmental agreement, if approved, would call for City of Bloomington participation of $31,500 per year. These funds have been incorporated in our solid waste fund, and we would certainly be willing to respond to any questions. And like you said, we also have Michael Brown, the Director of the Ecology Action Center, who all three entities have looked to, to be the individual who oversees and manages and directs these recycling and other environmental activities through their agency. So, either Mr. Brown or us would be happy to respond to any questions Council has on this IGA.
Can we see who would like to either speak to this or has questions? I have Alderman Fazini and Alderman Lauer. Okay, Alderman Fazini and Lauer, then we'll vote.
I guess, Michael, the question would be of you, if you.
Welcome, Michael. Good evening.
Michael, when you were doing the ad hoc day, if I remember right, there was about a two-hour line the first time, and you got it reduced to 30 to 45 minutes the second time. How much was that costing your organization at that point? Because I imagine you were funding it.
Sure, so the 2012 event was kind of a, a community effort that we spent a full year fundraising in order to create the amount of money, or raise the amount of money necessary for that event, which was the first in six years. Slight correction from Mr. Hales said, the previous state-funded event was six years or five years prior than that. So, we spent a full year in a fundraising effort. We did absorb a lot of those costs for that fundraising effort internally, but the community responded, you know, very greatly. Essentially, half of that event was paid for through public contributions. The city, the town, the county, each contributed 25,000 towards the event. The entire rest of the, about $150,000 that that event in 2012 cost was supplied by the community through sponsorships from businesses, contributions from private individuals, families, churches, just everybody contributed very generously. So, that was quite an undertaking, very successful, but the success of it was, in many ways, contingent or depended upon that large, that great interval since that previous event. You know, while we would like to be able to fund it in a way, in a means like this on a regular basis, we don't feel that on an annual basis that everyone's going to be able to necessarily contribute, you know, so generously.
So, will there be any fundraising done to augment what the city, the town, and the county are putting up at this stage?
Not at that level. There is, if you look at the, the budget included in this proposal, it calls for about $10,000 in private donations, and so we will be, you know, asking for, insisting donations at the event itself. It will not be required, we don't want to turn away any local residents, we want everybody to participate, but we will be trying to raise what we can, but will not have the resources to do as we did in 2012.
And last question, and I won't ask Jim to come up here, but when you wait six years in between, all of the material that would come was being disposed of somehow, was it not? It, it wasn't all piled up in garages?
Some people did pile it up, and, and we get calls on a daily basis about this. And so, literally, you know, several hundred calls a year about how to dispose of these materials. And some people do the right thing and do hold on to it. There was a huge backlog, and that's why it was nearly a two-hour wait for some people in 2012. Some people, however, can't wait, they're, they're moving out of town, they're cleaning out, you know, the, the home of a relative that's passed away, they don't have the option to wait. And so, some of these things get dumped in ditches, they get dumped down the drain, they get hidden in our trash, all of which can contaminate our local water supplies. To actually quantify how much is disposed of improperly, we have no way of knowing until we start to see the ramifications.
The, the point is, there is a considerable amount being disposed of. I see Jim shaking his head back there.
Yes, absolutely.
That we really want to prevent.
Absolutely.
For, for everyone's sake, and we appreciate what you're doing. Thank you, Michael.
Okay. Alderman Lauer.
I also appreciate what you're doing. However, I just got a few small troubling questions. Why, and maybe this is really redundant, but why can't we do this as the city independently on a more regular basis so we don't have that dumping?
I, I would say that that's kind of what we're probably working towards. I mean, even tonight, this intergovernmental agreement, I think is another milestone in that there's that realization, we have to be more proactive, we need to provide these kind of events on a regular basis, because if not, we all suffer, the long-term environmental costs, you know, through illegal dumping, things of that nature. But in many of the communities I've seen, they not only fund this on a regular basis, they sometimes fund it on a daily basis. I've been in communities where you can take these kind of material to a landfill that is equipped, it already has the stations where you can do that on a very regular basis. That could be in the future, but again, I think it has to evolve, but in collaboration with the Ecology Action Center and the others, I think this is another great step forward to helping address this particular need.
So, have we explored any option like that at all? Do we have any kind of plan in the future, David, that we could maybe on a monthly basis as a city so we don't have to have a third party involved?
Well, let me just say that I, I think the cost, the cost issue is something that comes into play. You know, that's evolving. I think we just saw that as we raise our solid waste fees, you know, again, sometimes there's that sensitivity to taking on too much additional cost to institute something on a regular basis. Michael, you wanted to say something?
If I may point out, in this agreement, there's actually no overhead costs, no staff costs for EAC time in this. Those are actually paid for through a separate agreement we have with the city, the town, and the county to provide solid waste planning and management services for the entire community. So, the actual costs you see in here, this is for promotion of a hazardous waste collection event and direct costs for us to hire the contractors for the collection, transportation, and disposal of hazardous waste.
Okay, so can you fill me in on that separate agreement, how much that's costing us on an annual basis?
Currently, this year, it costs the City of Bloomington nothing. But right now, it's paid for through the, the county's solid waste fund. This has been an ongoing agreement between the city, the county, and the, the town, but the solid waste fund with the county is actually diminishing and will actually eventually run out of revenue when the landfill closes in about three years. So, when that happens, then there will be, you know, separate arrangements for funding of that program.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Safe to say that if we did this on our own, rather than collaboratively, it'd be costing us a lot more?
Absolutely, there's definitely cost savings through doing this, you know, on the larger community scale.
Okay. Last but not least, Alderman Lomboy, and then we'll vote.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. I really, I'm very supportive of this, and I, I also, I was one of the people who was out there stuck for, you know, several hours. I actually was there, not even that long, I was there for a half hour, and I decided that I could not wait that long, and I just kept my stuff at my house. So, you brought up an interesting point, which makes me think that we really have to be more proactive, because I'm thinking about those individuals who might not have the opportunity, you know, if they have to leave town or something like that. I really think we, we need to do something about that. And I know we're, we're talking about costs here, but to me, the environmental cost of not doing anything is probably much higher. So, that's something that we, we really need to consider as a city and as a community, so thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right, we're going to go ahead and vote, please? We have eight ayes, no nays to announce. Thank you. All right, and we move right along to item 8D, Acceptance of Woodbury Estate Subdivision Park and Detention Basin Land for Ownership and Maintenance. And I will ask, first of all, is there a, is there a motion to approve in second before we begin discussion?
I'd make a motion, we approve as presented.
Okay. And, okay, motion made by Alderman Fazini, second by Alderman Fruen, and I will turn it over to our City Manager then if you want to clarify the explanation for this.
Mayor, I'd just like to recognize that Torrenquist Family Foundation is, hopefully you've read in the background information, this particular foundation and the Torrenquist family has been at the forefront of trying to help be a catalyst for affordable housing. This entire subdivision goes back to a time when they, working in partnership with the city and through our Community Development Block Grant Fund, saw a need and wanted to create a subdivision that would provide for additional affordable housing in the city. We have, unfortunately, with the recession, things kind of slowed down, but we're now to the point where we're ready, as previously called for in this agreement, to take title to both a potential future park site as well as a detention basin, and that is what's before you tonight. We're also continuing to address other issues there in the subdivision, but again, the Torrenquists have been a strong partner with the city in this, and we just wanted to make sure that the public understood that these, the conveyance of these properties are coming from the foundation. We think this is a very positive act, and hopefully, we'll continue to see further development in the subdivision. We'd be happy as staff to answer any questions you have on these property conveyances, which we're recommending the Council approve tonight, as stated in the staff backup memo.
Okay, questions, comments? Okay, then everybody vote, please. There are eight ayes and no nays to announce, Madam Clark. And we move on to our final item here, item 8E, and that's a resolution supporting the Mohammed Aquifer sole source application with the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. And I'll, just to clarify, I think as I had announced in the, our last regular meeting, that Mayor Kous and I and the mayors of Champaign, Urbana, and Decatur had gone to meet with the governor and the governor's staff about this issue. Since then, we were pleased to find that the governor has used his authority and asked the National EPA to not go ahead with this, and this is a resolution that the, the Town of Normal passed. If we have the Mohammed Aquifer designated sole source, then the likelihood of anything like this in the future is, is minimized. And I think, anything else you want to add to that?
Only that right now, the U.S. EPA is taking written comments. Previously, they took some oral comments in public hearings. We felt that it'd be, you know, good for the city to show our support by having the Council adopt this resolution, which in turn will be sent on to the U.S. EPA for their consideration prior to making a final decision on that sole source application.
Okay. Yes. Actually, could we go ahead and have a motion before, I'm sorry, since I've been following that protocol? Go ahead, Karen.
I'd be happy to make the motion to support this resolution.
Move by Alderman Schmidt, second.
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Sage, and then you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. And just a quick comment, David, if memory serves me right, I know this is, this has been a process that's lasted for several years, and I know very early in the process, I think you recognized the importance of this, because I think you came to the Council and said we ought to join. I think there was some coalition or consortium or something where, and it was going to require us chipping in on, to help cover some legal fees and such. But I appreciated that you were proactive and out in front on this. I know, long before I understood all the ramifications and kind of the, the framework of this, and, and so it's nice to see that we're finally kind of coming full circle on this, and that, you know, the governor, the senator, you know, these, these folks have, have, have agreed with kind of your earlier assessments. I appreciate that.
Okay. Other comments? All right, if everyone will go ahead and vote. There are eight ayes, no nays to announce. Thank you. And we move right along, we'll start with the City Manager's discussion. Mr. Hales, anything else you want to add this evening?
Mayor, I don't, do not have any other reports for the Council tonight.
Okay. I just wanted to start out by thanking John Kennedy and our Parks and Rec staff, our township elected and appointed officials for making our Memorial Day, you know, remembrance so important and spectacular. Thank you, everyone. And I want to also let everybody know Judy Buchanan is coming for you. Actually, Judy Buchanan from the Connect Transit had got Chris Kous and I to do a ride-along, and it basically also showed us the apps, you know, you can look on your cell phone, you see where the bus is coming, and it's coming to the next stop, and so, anyway, we, it was the first time I was ever on our local buses, I had to admit it's my maiden voyage. So, we had such a great success today, she says, she asked me to remind, or not remind, notify the Council that she's coming for you, she would want, she would like all of us to participate in this. And actually, it was funny, it's not, I just wanted to add a little drama to that. And so anyway, we, it was the first time I was ever on our local buses. I had to admit, it's my maiden voyage. So we had such a great success today, she says, she asked me to remind, or not remind, notify the council that she's coming for you. She would want, she would like all of us to participate in this. And actually, it was funny, it's not. I just wanted to add a little drama to that. Moving also along, I, we will have an article in the Panograph tomorrow that will be talking about the grant that we have received that is awarded but not executed for approximately a quarter of a million dollars for the Route 66 Visitor's Center in the first floor of the History Museum. And assuming we have every reason to believe that this will actually be executed, this is obviously will be something that's huge, not just for downtown, downtown revitalization, because capital will attract capital, all kinds of things will certainly be improved. It's on Route 66. We don't get our share of the Route 66 cash in either downtown or our overall community, but it's certainly something that will help us. I've been in, had some discussions with Mayor Kous today, we're meeting again a little later in the week, about how we can try to improve signage from both directions. And with Mr. Hale's, has had some, many suggestions, and will certainly involve Justine Robinson and people from the Bloomington Normal Visitor's Center. So when they, when people go today from Atlanta, driving around us to go to Pontiac and the reverse, because there are apparently a lot of people that start in Chicago and go to Santa Monica, or start in Santa Monica and go to Chicago, we want them to come through our downtown and through Normal, and so we can certainly take advantage of that. So that's something that's coming, and it's hopefully, as I've, I think I've said to Rachel Wells in the Panograph, hopefully this is one of the most important sort of initial dominoes that really begin to help us make economic progress in downtown and our community. Because again, it is absolutely critical for us. As I've mentioned before, when we were at other conferences, other mayors and other city council members from communities that are similar to us, eighty thousand people or so, eighty to hundred thousand people range, when they're in the midst of suburbs, they want to create an artificial downtown, which costs them hundreds of millions of dollars. We've got one. We just need to keep it and make it thrive and keep it as part of our identity. In other words, they're, they're basically suburban barnacles that are trying to create their own identity. Well, we're not one. We've got lots of advantages. So again, this is, this is certainly huge, and we were asked to try to keep it confidential until it was actually executed, but because it did require us to advertise in the Panograph, Rachel's rather, you know, astute about those things, so that's why there'll be the article that's appearing. The other thing that I did want to announce is that the mayoral open houses pursuant to suggestions by the participants will actually change from four-thirty to five-thirty from here on out. I believe it's already changed on the website. In fact, I'm almost certain, I think I saw that as well, from here on out. And at our next open house, we will have as our exciting guest, John Kennedy, who will be presenting to our residents and answering questions about Parks and Rec. But obviously, anything that we're dealing with in the council is obviously open to whatever kinds of questions we had, and there's nothing that's, that's really off limits. And that's what sometimes people don't, don't seem to understand. You mean, I can come without an appointment? Yes. Can I talk about something that's not on the agenda? Yes. You can talk about anything. Yes. And in fact, in the last meeting, someone asked about, crazy rumors don't die, does the city get any cut from when we sell artwork out of my office? I said, okay, no, we're not selling artwork out of my office. And so I brought everybody in. I said, okay, this is the artwork that everybody was, was talking about. And of course, it began to, you know, clarify enlightenment rather than a rumor mill. So certainly, the open houses, I think, have been, from my perspective, very much success. People treat each other with respect. There's some strong disagreements from time to time, but we've definitely treated each other with respect. I would just like, it'd be nice to have more of them. Sorry?
Where is it?
It's always, it's right here, right here in the Fishbowl. And it, the next one will be June, right. The, it'll be June 6th at four-thirty to five-thirty. Okay? That's all I have, and if I have, who?
Five-thirty?
Four-thirty to five-thirty.
Okay, I thought you said that it had changed.
It had, it had been four to five-thirty.
Oh, oh.
And actually, many people had suggested, in fact, it came out of suggestions from people who are pretty regular attenders, that they have to take off work to get there at four, and they usually feel that we've hit diminishing marginal returns after about an hour anyway. And if we need to stay, we'll stay, you know, unless I absolutely have to go to something else. So Aldermen and women, what would you, Rob Fazini is the only person who wants to speak? Oh, Scott.
Thank you. Concerning the Visitor's Center, it's not just Route 66, it's actually Route 66 and Abraham Lincoln. And that means that we'll be on both websites for each of those organizations and societies, which will bring people to town. And just, just, Rob, we had to dump Lincoln. We had, along the way, this was one of those. We love Lincoln. Yeah. But it, but for a variety of reasons, the Lincoln scholars didn't want us to have anything that wasn't at the David Davis Mansion, had to do with Lincoln. So this is strictly Route 66. Sorry to correct. And Tillsbury Flash, the airplane that's down there now, is going to find its natural home at Sierra, which will be a nice way to be entering the airport. It'll be in the corner as you go in, so that it'll be there, and it'll bring people to it, and then you could see that you can go to the Children's Museum, you can go to the History Museum, you can go to David Davis Mansion, you can go on our bike trails. It's going to be an attraction so that we can get people to come here and spend a little time. So we look at that. The advantage when the museum first proposed this was, it was a collaborative effort. It involved the History Museum, it involved Sierra, it involved the Convention and Visitors Bureau, it involved the city of Bloomington, the town of Normal, and it involved McLean County, because that's who owns the building that the museum's in. And then Terry managed to get the state of Illinois involved. So we have seven entities involved to make this a reality, and I think that in itself is a wonderful thing, when you can get that much collaboration to get something that's going to end up smackdown in our downtown, that, that works out real well. It'll be in the lower level of the museum, it's about twelve hundred square feet, so there'll be plenty of space. And the museum will be also making the south side of the museum a much more appealing entrance with the plans that Russell Francois has drawn up, so that as you enter, it'll be handicap accessible entry that, that way, and there'll be flags and benches and things of that nature. So the whole museum is going to change its look, and this is going to help that happen. So we're delighted. Thank you.
Alderman Black.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just recently, we passed the resolution supporting the Mohammed Aquifer sole source comment for the EPA. And one of the things I've been hearing more about lately, and I guess the underpinning to that was we want to protect our water supply. I continue to hear questions about the Enbridge Pipeline and its relation to our water supply. I'd be curious to know if staff could quick, do a quick report about where we are in that process, what the next steps are, because I want to make sure the public's informed about any potential opportunities for them to speak, and then keep the council apprised of any steps that we can take, considering that this is also kind of along the same vein of what we just passed. Is that my comment?
Okay.
Can I just say, too, that, let's see, I think we have that Enbridge, yeah, public hearing, or at least open house coming up. Let's see, I'm trying to look and see if I have that. Isn't that, is someone else, pardon?
Thursday, June 6th.
Thursday, June 6th. Okay. That's, that's, that's a great opportunity for anyone in the community to come, speak both to the...
Thursday, June 5th.
Okay. To speak to Enbridge representatives, and especially hear how they're going to help try to ensure, to the extent possible, to minimize, you know, any potential contamination if the pipe was ever to leak. We do have some, some further information, I think, city staff has put together, but again, we're really relying on them and everything they're going to have to do by federal regulations, as well as what are their contingency plans when there is a leak. But we'll share with you what we can. But yeah, June 5th, that's Thursday, from 5:00 to 7:30 p.m. at the Chateau Hotel and Conference Center. We just would recommend anyone from the public who would like to get more information on this project to attend that open house.
That's great information, and I know it's mostly a county issue that they're, they're having to work through, but it's, it's important, because I know people have mentioned our water supply, and we're already taking steps to be proactive about that, so we'll continue to advertise that, so thank you.
That pipeline does go through some of our Lake Bloomington watershed area, and plus, it also goes underneath the Mackinac River, which is a water supply to, to many other entities, so all those issues are part of that.
Just as, for information, actually, I have met with them twice, and at one time with Mr. Hale's, the Enbridge people. And although it doesn't go through Bloomington, it therefore is a, you know, regional sort of county issue, they, you know, they talk, talk a good show about all the repercussions of, not repercussions of when they've had a problem in Michigan, and how they're going to take really good care of their pipeline. And I understand that, but I did take issue when they said, well, we, we want to avoid a spill just as much as you do. I said, well, no, actually, I, I think it's not your water supply. So I think we have a greater stake in it than you do, even though they don't want bad PR. But anyway, certainly I would, thanks for bringing that up, and again, we perhaps, we'll get more information on June 5th.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And last but not least, Alderman.
Okay. On a real positive note, I was deeply, deeply honored to be involved in the rededication of the Vietnam and Korea monument at Miller Park over the weekend. It was a very touching event after the Normal event down at the Bandstand, and I'm, I'm also bringing thanks from Alderman Sterns, who is not with us tonight, who really spearheaded that several years ago. I've actually known several of the families that, that lost their sons, and for many years, and so it's, it really hit home. So I think it's something that everyone in the community at some point in time should go out and, and visit for a few minutes and, and just take a, take a look and, and think back about where we've been and where we don't want to go again. On another positive note, we don't mention Prairie Aviation Museum very often here, and I want to just make a footnote there, we have a very long aviation history here in Bloomington, and the Tillsbury Flash is one of those entities, and we have a very nice museum. I got to attend as a member as well. Their thirty, thirtieth anniversary of their inception, and they are a self-sustaining entity. They've never received cash from, from anybody but, but private funding. And so I'm very proud of that as well, and very proud of them, and I'm proud of what they've accomplished over the years and what they have out there. Also, Mayor, I don't know, you and I have talked about this privately a little bit, but there is a cruise in downtown on June the 7th, okay, and up to three hundred and fifty, up, up to three hundred and fifty cars that are going to be...
That's right.
...in the event, and I hope, I hope...
I'm gonna, I'm gonna be there.
...to bring one as well, so we'll see. So I hope to see you there. Thank you.
That's right. Thank you. Oh, boy, was I remiss.
That's on Sunday?
That, Saturday.
Saturday.
Saturday. At what time, Tricia?
The cars start cruising in at three o'clock, and the event goes all the way to nine p.m. We'll have live music, or we'll have a speaker at the Museum of History from the Auto Association of the Route 66 Association, Don White. We'll be making a presentation at the Museum of History. We also have Bill Kelly coming down with a vintage road sign that we're going to be auctioning off. A must-have for any car lover's collection. And this is the day after our downtown tour to Metro, which is our showcase of downtown law enforcement cases.
Fantastic.
We have fifteen sites on the tour this year, and we're very excited about that.
And so it starts at three o'clock? So it starts at three o'clock?
Yes, the cruise is...
So if someone wanted to bring an old Corvette down, they could come around three o'clock?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Mayor, don't we have a British Car Show coming in on Sunday?
And we do have a British Car Show, June 1st.
June 1st at the David Davis...
David Davis Mansion, that's right.
Yeah, we want to encourage people to go to that. That's, that's a great event.
I, I need you all to keep me honest, and that's still not possible. But anyway, thank you all very much, and can we have a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Move by Alderman Schmidt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Painter. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.